Called the meeting to order, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it is.
Alright, welcome everyone to the council meeting for May 4th. I have two housekeeping items before we jump into roll call. As you will see, Scott Simpson is on the call today. We have an agenda item 6A that Scott can answer any questions that you might have for him. And then a quick note, I anticipate a longer conversation on golf carts potentially. I've consulted with Don and we can, if we want to, have a more focused conversation about golf carts. We can always move that to a committee meeting so we can still do our first reading, second reading, have a committee meeting to further refine what we want to refine to get ready for the third reading if we want. Otherwise, we can just proceed normally and talk and hash it out tonight as well. With that, we'll move to roll call.
Here.
You say Morrison's here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson. Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Item three is the consent agenda. 3A is to announce proclamation of historic preservation month, May 2020, which you'll find in the detailed proclamation in your packet. B is a motion to approve the city council minutes of April 202020. C licenses, approved class E liquor license, class B wine permit and class C beer permit for fairway, subject to final approval by the Iowa alcoholic beverages division. D is a resolution to provide for a hearing on proposed plans, specifications and form of contract for 2020 Fourth Avenue Southwest Trail project for May 18, 2020, 6:30 PM, the letting on June 16, 2020 at the Iowa DOT. E is a motion to approve purchase of 14 handheld portable radios for the fire department from Raycom Critical Communications for $27,877.50. This is a CIP item. F is a resolution accepting work covering the 2019 Spencer Substandard Housing Rehabilitation Program, project number three. G is a resolution providing for prepayment of a sewer revenue bond, series 2009A. H is a motion to approve application and agreement to perform work within state highway right-of-way for Fourth Avenue Southwest Sidewalk Improvement Project. And I is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending April 30, 2020.
I'll introduce that.
First by Bill, second by Tom. Discussion questions on these items?
I like the move of getting the sewer revenue bond paid off early.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we will call the vote.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Larson.
Yep.
Wunschel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Item four is a public hearing on amendment number two to the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. You all received a memo today from Brian. Has everyone had a chance to read that memo? Has everybody seen that?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, I will declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments against? Are there any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments in favor of? There's a public hearing closed. We will move into 4A1, which is a resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Amendment number two.
So moved.
By Tom.
Second.
Second by George. Discussion on this?
I just would like to reiterate what I said in email and appreciate the detail that Brian went into on that for us. It was very good.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Brian can blame me for the memo.
Okay, we'll call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Wunschel.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. I guess the resolution carries. Item five, old business. 5A is an ordinance amending provisions of Title VII, Chapter 14 of the Spencer City Code concerning all-terrain vehicles. This is the second of three filings.
So moved.
By Tom.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Discussion questions on this? Hearing done. We'll call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Wunschel.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Alright, here is item 5B is a ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 10, Section 6 of the Spencer City Code concerning the operation of golf carts on Spencer Streets. This is the second filing.
I'm making a motion.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Discussion on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Go ahead.
Several of us got, and maybe we all got an email from a citizen questioning why we could not loosen some of the rules regarding lights and that sort of thing. I appreciate the individual's concern. I really believe that we ought to start with this and let it go for a year and see how the issues fall into place. And if the police does not have, they don't have any issues with it, and we've had no significant accidents, especially after dark, then maybe we want to look at it, but I think we ought to leave it alone.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, I admit, I had a call from a resident that had a very good argument about it, but I told him that I thought we'd gone far enough along with it that I would bring it up, and he was concerned about the going to the golf course with your golf cart and not being able to go home after dark. He said if he stays for until it gets dark before he gets home and all he asked, and it's not him, it was a foreign neighbor really, that he was asking about because neighbors got to cross one street and that's Country Club lane, the west, west one over there. All he had to do was cross that road to get home, but he'd be illegal actually if he did it after dark.
Mayor.
One that I had, and I mentioned the same as Bill did, that we've done this in increments and it's worked out very well so far and we might be able to expand in the future, but.
Okay, let's go Donovan and then Amanda.
Yeah, one of the things that after research and looking up the old code and all it changed in the golf cart, on the golf cart section is the fact that now we can drive them on all city streets besides the main highways, but it stated in the previous code that was sunrise to sunset. It also stated it needed a a triangle and a flag. That was all in the old code. Now, whether people were just doing it or assume that it wasn't in there. You know, after, I kind of held both the new amendment along with the old code, and they're identical except just being able to ride them on the street. Now, that doesn't say that we can't discuss on whether we want to be able to do them in a mile radius from the golf course so that if it is golfing, especially in the fall when they're going at you know, it gets dark by 5:30 and they're trying to get everything done and finish up the last few holes. You know, that kind of makes sense in the fall. Right now, it's not so bad, but something that we definitely could discuss or think about.
I was approached, I was approached today, had an interesting conversation with a citizen who talked about the slow-moving vehicle sign and the trouble he was going to have mounting it to the golf cart. So I think this is something that, as the mayor talked about earlier, that's something that could go back to committee and we can discuss that to see what they're somewhat different ideas. I personally just am not comfortable giving the blessing to go at night yet. I just am a little weary. I'm a very conservative person to begin with, and so that's what has me concerned is the after dark, so. Because the speed that they're going is much slower than the rest of the traffic, so that has me concerned.
Is Amanda next?
I was just going to yield my time to the chief. We've spent quite a bit of time over the last week discussing this particular facet of the ordinance and pros and cons and he went ahead of me. I have nothing else to say.
Just want to make one quick comment. I'll dovetail with the chief's comment and the mayor's comment, but I think we should maybe, there's some other things that shed some light on this in a committee meeting. I would, I'd like to see that.
Would anyone else like to see further conversation? Conversation, I mean a committee meeting between now and this council meeting?
Yeah, I would.
Who is the public safety chair?
I am.
Tom?
I guess I'm okay with that. My gut reaction.
Tracy's the public safety chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
We're on Tracy's.
Yeah, 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 that's right. Sorry.
Yeah, I'd be good with that. A little more discussion.
Good.
My question is, what basically, are we just basically looking at the nighttime or is there something else that really concerns?
Seems like the most, go ahead, Lauren, sorry.
Nope. I think it's just a couple of things, Ron. It's that and more towards the fall time of the year, but also what the chief alluded to with the signage on the carts, how you mount it, where you mount it. Couple of other questions that came up was, okay, what age group? You have to be a licensed driver. Are we going to require proof of insurance? If these things are, you know, those are questions I got a lot of people asking me about, just for clarification. But one person brought up the slow-moving vehicle sign. Can it be a smaller one? So it wouldn't, but kind of defeats the purpose, so to speak, but those are things I think that they want to talk about.
And I'm fine with it. I just kind of wanted to have a reminder of what we were looking at. Well, thanks.
Well, to be clear on the procedure, we'll vote on the second reading tonight as it's presented. And then if there's any modifications that we would want to make, we would do that prepared for the third reading. So tonight, we're voting on it as it's presented in the agenda. So there's a first, there's a second, we've had discussion. Is there any other discussion to be had?
Mr. Mayor, we got an insurance person on the call. I'm just curious of what changes insurance coverage does an owner of a golf cart have to have, Scott, if they're driving a vehicle on the streets?
I think.
You got an insurance guy and a lawyer. That's good.
Hey, pretty exciting stuff. Basically, you just need to make sure, you know, typically golf carts that are just used on the golf course, homeowner's insurance provides liability coverage automatically. The minute it leaves the golf course, the homeowner's policy no longer provides. So it's important that if you are using the golf cart off the golf course, you have to get proper insurance in place. Typically, a proof of insurance card would not come with that kind of policy, but just no different than when snowmobiles needed to require, we can get them. So I, I'm not so sure that would be a bad, it wouldn't be a bad idea just because it'll remind people to get the insurance. Most people, I think, think they have it automatically under their homeowner's policy in which they don't.
Thank you, Scott.
Great point. Any other discussion? Call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Wunschel.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, new business. 6A is a motion to approve group insurance renewal with Iowa governmental healthcare plan for 7/1/2020 through June 30, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Discussion on this? Questions?
Brian, could you give us a nothing? How long have we been with this company and can you just kind of go over some of that?
We've been with IGHCP since 2008, I believe. And so we're on our, going into our 13th year. It's worked very, very well. You know, early on, we were seeing very low rate changes. The last couple of years, we've seen a little bit more adjustment in the premium. I think there's overall throughout the whole trust, there's been some increase in some large claims. So that's driving some of that. I think prescription drug use is a huge part of that as well. But overall, you know, this year we're seeing a 7.3% adjustment. I still think that in the current insurance, health insurance marketplace, that's pretty favorable. And again, some of that is extra funding, you know, we, as you know, we partial self-funds, we fund down a deductible for the employees. So we're putting money into the account to pay future claims and several years, we don't spend as much money as we put into that fund. It's in our account to pay for claims might maybe in future years. So at the end of the day, our rate change could even be less if our claims are better. So by doing the partial self-funding, it's allowed us to have some flexibility in the rate, the final rate. Like, for example, this year, the final rate to the IGHCP trust was 9.9%. So because of the plan design we pick and the level of funding we do, we're coming in at 7.3. So that's allowing us to have a better control over those rate adjustments. Does that ensure help, Ron?
Yeah, that helps me a lot because we have quite a few new council and just understanding what policy we have. Because before we were starting to look at 10 or 15% increases. So overall, you still rate this as a great program and and for the city?
Yeah, I think it's been a great program for the city overall and I would be surprised if we, if our rate increases have averaged, it's under 5% since 2008. And I can tell you, there aren't very many businesses out there that could say for 13 years, they've had averaged less than 5% rate adjustment on health insurance. So I think it's worked out very well for the city.
Scott, I have a.
Go ahead, Bill.
I have a question, and I'm no way suggesting we do this. If we were to get out of this plan, are there any financial consequences of, consequences of getting out of the group?
No, no, none at all. You know, we're tied in by contract till the end of the year, which the plan year ends June 30. But other than that, there's no extra funds tied into a fund somewhere that we prefunded or anything like that. So there's no penalty from that standpoint.
Well, there's no tail you have to pick up or anything?
No, nope.
Thank you.
We would have some exposure for claims that happened prior to June 30th that might not come in till July or August, but we've got the funding for that in our fund, so.
Alright, thank you.
For the, for the new guys on the council, do you understand what we're doing from a partial self-funding standpoint? Or I can go into that a little more detail if you'd like.
Is this, this is like a self-insured captive type insurance, correct?
Well, it's not a captive. We actually buy health insurance from Wellmark. We just buy a high deductible plan. And then what we do is by partial self-funding, we fund that deductible down to Plan 1, $500 deductible for the employees or $2,000 under Plan 2, or Plan 3. So we're picking up that difference from the deductible we're buying, which is $5,000 down to there. And by doing that, we're able to reduce the health insurance premiums we pay Wellmark. And if we have good claims, then we get to keep that money rather than sending it to Wellmark with premiums.
Scott, did we have any people that had to move out because of the 7 being eliminated?
Yeah, so this year, we've typically offered three plans, a $500 deductible plan, a $750 deductible plan and a $2,000 deductible plan. Well, the way the rates fell this year with our underlying plans that we buy from Wellmark, that $750 deductible plan was actually going to cost the employees and the city more than the $500 deductible plan. So what we decided to do is eliminate the 750 deductible, and that affected eight people, I think, Bill, eight or nine. And we've sent individual correspondence to all of those. I had one employee ask a couple of questions. But other than that, I think it was pretty well received by the employees there. So they're actually getting a little bit better plan than they have. And based on the renewal rates, it's going to cost them just a little bit less money if they have dependence on the plan. And overall, so overall, the employee's cost is, you know, is about 2% and it's about a 1.5% savings to the city overall. So pretty, I think it's positive for both employee and city.
I think I asked the question to Brian and Amanda earlier, and I don't remember saying it, but do we offer HSAs and can cities offer HSAs?
We do not offer HSAs. We sure can. I would have to look to see if that is actually any plans in the IGHCP. I'm not so sure it is.
It may not even be a plan.
My understanding, Scott, is that Wellmark has limited the number of base plans that IGHCP can purchase, and we're at, they've been at that max for a number of years. Because I know the last few years, we've had that conversation with them about offering an HSA, but there's no room within the plan design that they buy to bring that platform onboard.
Okay. Thank you.
I know they just, at this point, haven't been able to make it work with the plan design or bring it in forward.
The other thing with Wellmark is they've never really figured out how to price HSAs. So the premiums on their HSAs are not very competitive in the group health market. So there's financially to the city and the employee, from a premium standpoint, it hasn't made a lot of sense either.
In my mind, and for myself, it's an opportunity for someone that may be, let's say, 55 and older can put money into that HSA plan and use that for, if they want to retire early or whatever, they get some money to pay insurance premiums, that sort of thing.
Sure, sure. And we'll continue to bring it up to them and maybe sometime they'll throw one in for us to consider.
Discussion, any other questions?
Just quick to Bill's point, the city does have an HRA available to, I think, about half our employees. Except for, have voted to participate in it upon a bona fide retirement. So what that would be is instead of taking their cash payout or vacation sick leave, that would roll over to the HRA. So we have some bit of a sort, but it's not, you know.
It's just tax-free dollars to buy after, after you retire.
Yep, correct.
Any other discussion or questions? Alright, this is a motion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
I'd just like to make the comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I just want to thank you, leaders of the community, for what you've been doing through this COVID-19 experience. I think you've done a phenomenal job leading our community and I just want to say thank you for that.
Our pleasure. Thanks for hanging in there with us. Alright, 6B, the motion to approve purchase of five rapid rectangular flashing beacons, otherwise known as the RRFBs from General Traffic Controls for $45,110 with funding from the Wellmark Foundation Grant and the Safe Routes to Schools reserves.
I'll move that motion.
First by George.
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion on this? Questions?
Where are they going to be located?
I can, I can take that question. So the first one will be on West 9th Street, west of 8th Avenue for Johnson School, Fourth Avenue East, on the north side of East 14th Street, that'll serve Fairview School, 10th Avenue East, north of 14th Street for the middle school, Fourth Avenue Southwest, north of 8th Street for Lincoln. And then the last one will be on 13th Street Southwest, east of 8th Avenue. So that'll be the new housing development that's behind Bomb Cars. So that'll tie into the Safe Route sidewalk on the north side of 13th Street Southwest, which in turn will tie into the new trail and then also the sidewalk that will be constructed by Walmart to facilitate pedestrian traffic and safety in that area.
And Mark, when will those go in?
That will be this spring. I can't tell you an exact date. Once we get it approved and get the equipment ordered, if there's no delay in equipment due to the COVID, we're seeing a little bit of delay in some shipments of some product. That will be determinate to a certain degree, but we anticipate spring. Also, you'll see another RRFB go up on West 4th Street at First Avenue as part of the construction CIP project that we have in that area. So you'll start to see more throughout the community. It'll help condition drivers and improve the pedestrian safety in our community.
Is Mark Warburton out there?
What was that, Ron?
Is Mark Warburton out there?
Ah, he was on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Mark, have you seen a great increase in the speeding in those areas or, you know, as a police force? Has it really helped in those areas?
Oh, I think it does. And even if you're the pedestrian hitting those, it makes, it makes a world of difference out there. I think the general, the motorist is being conditioned. So I think they're really starting to take off and I support this 100%.
Just want to add one thing that in my notes, so that I recommended changing it from Safe Routes to School to Capital Improvement Reserve, based on a further review of the Safe Routes Fund. Moving it to Capital Improvement, the city share would offer a little bit more flexibility and not put a strain on the Safe Routes Fund, so.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions?
Ryan, question. On Safe Routes to School, is there still funding out there? You know, we were getting, how does that work now?
Right now, it's a joint effort between the city and the school. We each put 30,000 into it. It, there really is not a lot of state funding left. About five years ago or so, they rolled it into one. They took about five, six individual programs and moved them into one. And whether even that program exists anymore, I'm not sure, but all of this is local funding between the city and the school.
Thanks, Brian.
Alright, this is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Carries. Item 6C is a resolution to award contract for the 2020 Crackin' Joint Ceiling Project and approved contract documents with Sioux Commercial Sweeping of Sioux Senator Iowa for $48,726. The quotations were taken on 4/21/2020. for forty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The quotations were taken on four twenty-one, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion or questions?
When will that project start, Mark? Is it, is it early spring, or is it kind of up in the area?
It'll, it'll be up in the air uh, with the contractor's schedule, so it's kind of hard to determine right at this time. But it'll, uh, it'll be this construction season.
Question on funding and stuff that's going through the state with the road tax. Have, have you seen anything yet, or are you anticipating, or what are you looking on the road tax?
Well, because of the road uh, road use tax increase a few years ago, that's allowed us some flexibility to uh, perform a few of these maintenance projects and uh, help with uh, the infrastructure maintenance. However, uh, due to the recent situation we have with the COVID and the reduced amount of driving that has been happening, uh, we have had internal conversations that we will indeed have to take a look at that and uh, be cognizant of that with future planning, because we are expecting a decrease. And the road use tax is, is delayed uh, as we receive that. And uh, we've had conversations and we expect a change.
Thanks for the update, Mark.
Any other discussion? Call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Voncho.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six D is a resolution to award contract for the twenty twenty PCC patching project and approve contract documents with the Los Construction Spencer Iowa for forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Quotes were taken on four twenty-two of twenty twenty.
I'll move that. Second.
First by Lauren, second by Tom. Discussion on this?
Looks like we've probably got some of those projects already done. I mean, Ross out there, it looked like they maybe had part of them done there on, what was that, First Avenue Southeast?
Yeah, yeah, Ron. Um, the losses requested to start early on this project, uh, being it was a maintenance job. Uh, they had their insurance and bonds in place, and, and they have the work for the patching job done, so.
Was that the only section that was going to get replaced, or was there other one in that project?
Um, there was a patch on Second Avenue Southeast and Highway eighteen. Uh, there was a patch on East Thirteenth Street at Grand Avenue going towards the hospital. And then there was two patches over on West Ninth Street, uh, at Eleventh Avenue.
Okay, thanks, Ross.
Any other questions, comments? Call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Voncho.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Carries. Six E is the resolution to approve contract documents for the twenty twenty Sealco project with Midwest Coatings for fifty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. This is a quotation project.
I move we approve that con- uh, resolution.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Bill. Discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Voncho.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Carries. Six F is a resolution approving and confirming compensation matrix for the non-collective bargaining full-time city employees for seven, one, twenty twenty through six, thirty, twenty twenty-one.
I'll introduce that resolution.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by George we'll go with. I know this went through the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on this?
I was just going to ask Don a little question. Looks like we did a high spread on, on the, this one. We gave two point seven five to some employees and a dollar amount to other employees. I don't believe that we've ever, as a council, done that. It's usually the one or the other. Um, I just wondered if Don, if that's how Don recalled, or, or.
I've done this, this in one year, but I know we have uh, in past years, tried to do some balancing between flat rate and the percentage rate. So I don't, I, I would say this isn't beyond the sort of things we normally consider.
The last contract, we did that, Ron, where we had a split between the salary was the percent and the um, hourly were a flat dollar amount. For both, or for non-union. Say that again, Ron.
What, that was three years, on the contract three years ago, or?
Yeah, the last three-year cycle, we did that for um, the non-collective bargaining was a split between percent and um, dollar amount, just like this one is proposed as.
Okay. Um, and I think we had talked about maybe doing these contracts a little closer together with the bargaining and non-bargaining. Because having the non-bargaining go one year in front and one year. I've argued there's several years to have the non-bargaining go first. Um, it, it's never seemed to go that way, but uh, uh, I, I would like to see us go with non-bargaining upfront once in a while.
I'm not sure what you're asking. I'm sorry.
What we've been doing on the, before, we've had a um, mark, or the bargaining union go first with the raises and stuff, and then we always seem to come back after they've decided what they get raised, and then have the non-bargaining afterwards. I would rather see where the non-bargaining come first. Now, I've always argued a lot, basically, what the non-bargaining is using the union to bargain their, their rate. Because what they're, what generally happens, and what has normally happened in the whole process, is non-bargaining takes what the bargaining unit gets. And, and I'd like to see, you know, I would like to see non-bargaining go first. We have a little more say-so, but, you know, I understand where it's coming from, but I would think the non-bargaining could go first every other contract, and, and we could offset those and see, see where it goes. And I'm only one person, so.
Sure. Well, that's, I mean, that's certainly an avenue to take. Um, I, I think as we move forward with our conversations around the wage league, um, that will also help inform our decisions and our processes for how we uh, handle both bargaining and our non-bargaining employees as it relates to wages. So I, I think that's all part of the conversation as we adopt whatever recommendations we choose to adopt, and as we begin to implement. And that's part of our strategy.
Thanks, Amanda.
Do we have a a percentage, that fourteen thirty-eight, that's the, the base wages for the hourly employees? Does that have an average percentage of what that is, increases?
About three percent.
What's that?
It's about three percent.
Is basically what the bargaining unit took, right? Was that fourteen? That's the number you're using. You didn't basically re, re um, calculate the, the contracts of the um, non-bargaining unit. You just took the number from, from the union side of the deal, right?
Right, for the hourly employees.
Correct.
To Amanda's point, I think this is a good discussion for the Personnel Committee to hash through as we move forward with a total comprehensive look at how we conduct the business of the city as it relates to wages and uh, metrics and steps and so on and so forth. And so certainly a, a macro overview of how we do, to your point, Ron, conduct the business of allocating the annual raises, uh, is certainly something that should be put on the agenda and should be looked at. Uh, Charlie, of course, will consult us on that, but at least I would think six months out, start to develop that process and move forward from there. With that, is there any other discussion or questions on six F?
Well, I'd just like to mention, I think that next year is going to be a whole different can of worms to discuss, depending on how this economy recovers, if it does recover. Um, I think, I don't think we'll be looking into the type of increases that uh, we've been talking the last few years. So it should be a whole different ballgame. Hopefully not, but I'm concerned it will be.
Thank you, George. We'll call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Voncho.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Moriarty.
Aye.
Thank you. Carries. Six G and H, a little housekeeping quick to remind you that they're separate. So landfill and solid waste are two separate items, even though we talk about them together, you know, as a department, but they're, they're two different things. And we would have the option, there is nothing binding that says we would have to make a rate change effective July first. I know, we'll get into some discussion, but I wanted you to know, uh, before we, before I read these, that, uh, to remind you, they are different, and we do have some flexibility, of course, on how we want to handle these. So six G is a ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Five, Section Twenty-One of the Spencer City Code concerning solid waste rates and charges effective of July first, twenty twenty. This would be the first filing. Make the motion. First by Donovan.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Discussion on this? I know Brian sent a memo out earlier. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, with everything that's going on right now, I, I know you're saying with, that maybe they don't have to go into a separate life first. Is that what you're kind of mentioning there on, on these?
Correct. So the history uh, of rate increases is typically timed with the new fiscal year on July first. There's nothing mandated in our code that says that we have to do that. So if we uh, did want to have the discussion later and/or have the discussion now with a later date, we can do that. There's there's no restrictions on that. So to your point, Ron, if we wanted to move it down the road based on the uncertainty of what's happening now, we, we can. Um, but the, so the agenda item tonight is as presented, of course.
I would like to see maybe move that till September first, at least, and see, you know, I think, by, to clear a picture of what's going on. Um, you know, I'd like to, go ahead.
Sorry, Ron, I didn't mean to interrupt. As the mayor, because mayor and I talked about the delay of it um, earlier with regards to solid waste and, you know, um, even I think in my memo I had a delay. Our rate schedule currently now goes from June thirtieth, and this, as the mayor was making his comments, it just struck me for whatever reason. Would those rates just continue past June thirtieth, Don, or would we have to do, as part of this, some interim continuation of those?
I think we'd probably have an agenda item for eighteenth uh, to continue the current rates.
Well, that's all right. So our procedural options, we can vote on this, or we can table it and move it. Um, or we can have an amendment attached to it. So if there is further discussion that wants to be hashed out, it might be advisable to not take any action on this item tonight and refine it and move it to Brian's point. We can carry forward the current rates to an undetermined date in the future.
Mayor, where would you look at that group going to finance and personnel, or, or where would you be looking at sending that committee?
Public Works.
Public Works?
I would think. Right, right.
I personally thought that was very well explained to us, uh, how that's been working. I thought it was quite clear to myself.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Bill?
I had, I had received, I don't know if everyone got, had received, I'd gotten a a text message from a citizen concerned about what we've just been talking about because of the COVID nineteen. And after having the discussions, I think it was yesterday with Amanda, then sending a letter, an email out to, to Brian and Amanda. If we're really looking at two different things, and one is established in the landfill charges, which really, in my, if I'm not incorrect, I believe doesn't affect, necessarily affect Spencer. It affects those who uh, we are contracting with outside of Spencer. Is that right, Amanda?
Correct.
My question is, or my feeling is, is that, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting H before G. But um, the, if this, if I think I'm getting this right, the city doesn't pay a, a fixed amount per, per ton of what we haul to the landfill for uh, solid waste. We um, uh, we pay a flat monthly fee or whatever's established, I think, once a year or whenever. And so the question I had was, and, and Amanda, please explain to this to the rest of the council, if you would. And maybe they're aware of it, because once we have excess funds in the landfill, they just sit there. We can't do much with them. Is that correct, Amanda? You want to explain that?
Well, Brian's probably better suited to explain it, but yes. Um, because it's an enterprise fund, we don't transfer funds between there and the general fund. Which if you remember, when we had the conversation golf course, that's why we couldn't take general funds and s- you know, supply the golf course with funding, because at the time, it was an, an enterprise fund. So when the landfill is just sitting on cash, um, there are very few mechanisms or levers that we can move to take that excess cash and put it somewhere else. Um, you know, solid waste. We can't take extra money from landfill and put it to solid waste.
So the point I made with Amanda was, if that being the case, if we were to go ahead and uh, approve H, and if there was, if we have excess funds in, at the landfill, is it possible to reduce the monthly fee that the city pays to the landfill for solid waste? And to uh, in essence, uh, the net effect is, is that we can keep from charging the customers that additional increase, at least for a period of time. Does that make sense, Brian?
It is. We did already reduce the amount for fiscal year twenty-one. Um, we took it down another thirty thousand um, as an effort to um, at least provide some parity in what we are paying the landfill for waste, but also to put towards operations to buy, essentially buy down a rate increase. Um, we could look at a little bit more. I don't know how low that transfer should go. Um, but yeah, that's, we do, that's why we established that procedure, and then fiscal year twenty-one, we did take into account and move it down some. They said about, I think it's thirty thousand is what we're going to save, or save next year.
So the, the current fiscal year, we, we paid, we've paid five hundred and forty thousand dollars to the landfill, and it's budgeted for the next fiscal year for five hundred and ten thousand dollars.
The question I have, though, and I think the point Amanda made is, at the same time, we don't want to uh, put our solid waste in jeopardy. In three years, we need to spend some money for a new truck, and prices have gone up, and we, we have to find the money someplace else. That's the downside of not, in my mind, not uh, considering some sort of a nominal rate increase.
Well, don't we have the CIP of, for that uh, separate entity? Brian?
Well, all the CIP funding comes from solid waste reserves, and the only funding source for that is if the, at the end of the fiscal year, if the solid waste operations fund has the capability, once we set aside our thirty-five percent that we keep in that reserve for operations, then anything above that gets transferred to solid waste reserve. So it, that's, that deposit on an annual amount can fluctuate. It all depends on the ebbs and flows of solid waste. Um, about four years ago, I think, we put about twenty thousand in, and then after that, we had a couple of good years ago. And then after that, we had a couple of good years again, as I mentioned in that memo, because of hailstorms. Um, increase the amount of tonnage that went through um in construction projects. But the funding source for all those capital is just excess rev, the, the excess revenue generated by the operations.
Well, my, if we were paying that extra three hundred thousand or roughly um. That that would have to raise our rates here for the, our residents in the city, where now we're trying, we're actually holding that down by. Paying the flat fee. That we don't have.
What I mentioned there is, had we kept with us paying the tipping fee, that would have been for fiscal year nineteen, what we would have paid. We would have paid another two hundred and fifty thousand to, to the landfill. Um, if that's what you're referring to, George, but.
That's what I referred to, but wouldn't that um have um caused us to have to raise our rates if we would have had to pay that to the, yeah.
Yeah, but uh. Yeah, the rate structure would have already increased much larger than what it has over the last few years to, to take that into account.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. That's the way I interpreted it, and I thought, well, we're doing well by being able to keep those rates lower than. And you, and you're still getting enough for the CIP, right? There's enough in there for that, for new equipment?
Currently, yes. Yeah, I mean, that's built all into the projections.
Bill, would you be willing to convene a finance committee meeting and work with Brian and Amanda and that committee? And come up with some more, uh, I guess, uh, straightforward fee recommendations back to the council? If we just can't get back there, fish this stuff out. Is there time sensitivity on H?
Um, June thirtieth, and if we had to extend it by ordinance, it takes three.
Mayor, I was gonna point out procedurally, because G um solid waste rates isn't ordinance. Um, if you do want it to do some change to be effective uh in July. It would be wise to go ahead with the first filing, and you can make your adjustments between first and second.
And modify.
Have a committee meeting in between.
Yeah, because if you delay, you're not going to be able to get SMU to adjust the bills in July.
Okay. So to be clear, we want to, uh, well, what is recommended is that we go ahead and, okay, the first reading as presented, and then modify it, kick it back. Do the second and third readings, we can refine it down to whatever we want to. So that's where we're at right now. Is there any other discussion? Hey, I'm gonna call the vote.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Moriarty?
Hi.
Thank you. Carries, six H is a resolution establishing landfill charges and fees effective, it should read July one, twenty twenty.
I'd introduce that.
First by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by George, this is in the same boat.
This isn't an ordinance, though, it's just a resolution.
So this one can be tabled.
Well, we don't, I don't know if we necessarily need to, because this is a charge for everybody other than the city of Spencer, right?
Correct.
Brian, that, that uh, oh, funding pages and stuff that you sent out. Um, is that more for the landfill and uh, that's got both of them on there, right?
That is, that was just solid waste.
A solid waste?
Yep.
I noticed a couple discrepancies on there. Um, we're, we project future uh sales tax as expense. But you don't project an estimated sales tax as revenue? All right, I mean, it's, it's a thirty thousand dollar swing.
No, there is um revenue. I did notice that the amounts don't match, but there was twenty-five thousand as sales tax revenue coming in.
For twenty twenty-one, but twenty-one, twenty-two on is zeros.
Okay. Guess we'll look at.
And then why was the solid waste reserve down seventy-five hundred bucks, just a clarification here? And then it jumps up to five hundred and eleven, then down to two thirty-seven? It seems like there's a lot of fluctuation swings in that.
Um, I don't have that in front of me. I have the memo, I don't have the, the um.
The net cash flow after debt line item is looking at.
I mean, that's some pretty big fluctuation there. For us, and I, I, I know that this is just estimated, it's forecasted budgets, but. Seems just a little odd.
What page you on, Donovan?
Page two of three.
Line forty-six.
Well, we don't have numbers on our line. Oh, yeah.
No, he's on, yeah, line thirty-six.
Thirty, thirty-six, and now I know it takes it back out in line forty-six. I'm seeing that. But it just, it, I'm just kind of curious why the last two years is seventy-five, and then it jumps to five eleven, then down to two fifty-seven. That just seems some weird calculations there.
I will get you an answer, Donovan.
Okay.
I don't, I don't create these, so I don't know exactly when we give our budget and CIP, you know. Our budget might be thirty-some line items, and then PFM consolidates them into specific groupings. And so I don't know um exactly which one, um, but I, I'll get you guys, I'll get an answer for you tomorrow.
Yeah. It's just quite a swing difference. If it was closer, it'd be, wouldn't stand out.
Yeah, some of it's the volatility and what we project as excess revenue. Um, but to go down to seventy-five hundred for the current fiscal year and next year, um, does seem a little bit lower than normal. But in the past, that's been that volatility and what um was excess above required reserves.
So the moral of the story is we need more hailstorms?
No.
More construction always helps. Or re, or remodeling renovations.
Less comments from Bill.
If we have a first, we have a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? I will call the vote.
Nelson?
Hi.
Morrison?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Juancho?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, resolution carries.
One thing, Mayor, just for the council, is what we'll do is, um, this week we'll send out renewal agreements to all the. Um, contract holders um with these rates in them, um, for them to approve, and so there's. Three, can, about five, I think, contract holders that will be sent out to. And then those will come back to the council for approval when they get um returned to us.
All right. Item six I is a motion to approve agreement for the Aquatic Center operation for the twenty twenty season with the Spencer Family YMCA.
So moved.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan, discussion on this.
What's uh, what's COVID nineteen's effect going to be on this with? Do I, do we know, or, you know, I mean?
We don't really know yet. As of right now, the governor has all pools closed until May fifteenth, um, at the earliest right now. So we're gonna have continued discussions with the Y um as we move forward. And we get more guidance from the governor on when things open. Um, and have those discussions, if we open, what are some of the social distancing and some of those guidelines look like? And how do we prep the Aquatic Center for those? So we'll be having probably some conversations with the Y here next week, um, closer to when the governor's gonna make some decisions on. Uh, extending the closures or opening things back up, and then how, how do we want to move forward? Um, the Aquatic Center is scheduled to open on May thirtieth. Um, I think it'll probably be a little bit after that, if I would had, had to guess. Um, this agreement kind of builds on those discussions. And um you'll see in there, if we don't open by July fifteenth, we won't open for the season at all.
Okay, Jared, if, if we were not to open, are we still obligated for that amount on this contract?
No, I, I don't think so. That relieves us of all of our, Don would be able to answer that a little bit better, but I think it says in there that uh. We, both parties would be relieved from this agreement.
Yeah, we, we have an obligation to compensate them for actual expenses.
So the hiring process.
They didn't seem as concerned about that as I thought they might be.
Yeah.
Because they, they could be facing some pretty good unemployment claims if they have all staff lined up and then we don't go. Uh, but we don't have to pay the contract amount, we just have to uh basically compensate them for actual expenses.
Well, they're gonna be classified as their employee actual expense and stuff for. Yeah, we got these people ready to go, now they gotta put them on unemployment. Is that gonna be in our contract?
Uh, they didn't seem concerned about that.
How do we, how do we fund that, Brian? Do we fund that upfront, so they don't have a cash flow issue? Or do they send us uh periodic invoices?
We make periodic payments um both in June, July, um, and August, I believe, it's spelled out. And then we reconcile after the end of the season in about October, um, to see if we've overpaid or underpaid up to that date. Um, question I would have is, um, if we're not open on June one, et cetera, are we still to make those scheduled payments? Or do we wait till a decision has been made on opening? Because the first one is June fifth.
That's my question.
Zoom is hard sometimes. Uh, we discussed waiting until actual happens has been made.
We would just push those back.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion care. Item six J is a motion to approve agreement for the Playground Program Services for the twenty twenty season with the Spencer Family YMCA.
I move approve the agreement.
First by George.
I'll second it.
Second by Ron, discussion questions on this?
Same thing.
Amanda, I see that, that they thought that could go on, they could move it to July if they wouldn't, if this will be, had to be pushed back, right?
Right, so our, in our discussions with them, um, the level of staffing, amount of training, things like that, is. Far less substantial with the Playground Program than it is with the pool. And so as long as there's an ability to open and do the program, no matter how short, uh, they were willing to do that. So um preferably it'd be the whole season, but even if it's just a couple of weeks, um, and the same provisions would apply. The uh number of days delayed in starting the program is reduced from the total cost of the contract.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, six K is a resolution to extend action of April sixth, twenty twenty regarding the employee work schedules and compensation.
So moved.
First by Tom. Second by Donovan, questions, discussion on this?
I saw Amanda's notes here, we have a meeting at like the eighteenth, so if, if things would come up at that time where we. Are, are we willing on, on who comes in during that, this time, could we be called, recalling people? In certain groups, or how does that work?
Yeah, so um what I've recommended is that for um. For purposes of formal action, that we extend the resolution through May twenty-fifth. Which is the day after Memorial Day. Um, however, we know that um the governor has uh provided some additional guidance on libraries. We've had internal conversations about the transfer station, and we know that council will have another meeting on May eighteenth. And so our, my thought was, um, let's put an end date. Let's reconvene on the eighteenth, and if we have additional information from the governor on either openings or closures. Um, we can have the discussion, and if we need to extend it past that, we can. Uh, and if, if not, that gives staff time to put parameters in place. Um, as we've seen, as she's reopening things, that there are guidelines that are in place that are um. Sometimes challenging to figure out how, how to incorporate that in, into work. So uh my recommendation is that we extend the resolution through May twenty-fifth. That we reopen the transfer station to the public starting tomorrow with the parameters that we already have in place. Um, on Saturdays, so no more than ten people at the facility at a time, uh, no cash payments. Um, masks, get the uh, um, the, the plastic barriers. Things like that, and that we um offer curbside pickup at the library. Uh, that's.
So Amanda, what is the biggest group that we have staying home right now? What, what category? Because it sounds like.
Right now, um, the largest group that's staying home is when we have. Split the street division crew in, into two, so one crew works one week, one crew works the next week. Um, otherwise, everyone is either working from home or working at their stations. Um, with extreme social distancing put into place. The street division was just really challenging to do that, given the work and shared equipment and, and things like that. Which is also uh similar to what the county has done, um, and. So we would, in this situation, we would recall um the library staff uh to be available or. Curbside pickup, so they would, people would call or email or go online and put their book orders in, and they'd prepare those and. Um, facilitate that stuff at the library.
Do they need the entire staff to do that, do you think?
No, they would probably want a split crew as well.
Probably a good idea since we haven't peaked yet.
Amanda, I'm sure there's been discussion, uh, we've got street division working half, basically half the time by getting paid. Um, has there been discussion between golf course and parks and street division of areas? Especially in the parks area where they could be still be using social dis, distancing, and they could still be working? Or does that cause a, cause a, a um, a, a union issue, Mark?
I don't know that it causes a union issue, but at some point we've run out of equipment.
Okay.
And so we're trying to really, especially in the Parks Department, we're trying really hard to prevent um overlapping of. Equipment usage, so everyone's assigned their own mower, that's the one you use, you know, trimmer.
And I have, but I just, I was just curious.
Mark's got a, Mark's got a tractor, he could probably let the city use, right, Mark?
He's got a little work to do as well.
Um, I did, I did invite uh Eric Ticker to join us tonight. Um, as you all know, he's the Clay County Emergency Management um Director. Just to provide, maybe just a little insight into where we're at uh as a county, and then a little. Insight onto what the county's plans are, um, because they're in the same boat as we are, they've. insight onto what the county's plans are. Because they're in the same boat as we are. They've, they've sent people home to work. They've split crews. They've closed their facilities to the public. So he, he might be able to shed a little additional light on what's going on in the county.
Yeah. So, um, the board supervisors will be meeting tomorrow. I'll be attending that meeting as well to discuss our future plans here. All of our offices are split staff right now. And so, uh, we, we, you know, we, it's that redundancy that you're looking for in this time. And so we, we have half our staff working in the, in the building, half of our staff working from home. The building is closed to the public right now. And so we're going to discuss tomorrow how we're going to continue that. I would echo, I guess, Amanda's words in that. I think it's important to wait until May fifteenth and see what the governor says. I agree also, the comment was made that we haven't peaked in Clay County yet, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. You know, we had three cases. We had one, and that one was cleared off the books before we got number two. And number two and three were both cleared off of the books before we got number four. And now we have four, five, six, seven, all on the books currently. So we've gone from no active cases to four active cases in the last six or seven days. And so this, this is just really starting to impact Clay County. And, um, you know, the, uh, now that there's a, a confirmed positive cases at Tyson's in Storm Lake with the loosening of restrictions and obviously Lake Kokoboji directly to our north. Those are both concerning issues that we're going to have to see how that stuff plays out here over the next few weeks. And so tomorrow, again, tomorrow, we're going to discuss with the board in preliminary discussions. We've kind of all talked about that we're going to wait and see what Governor Reynolds recommends on, on May fifteenth. And then, um, kind of a targeted opening of June, first part of June there. You know, we had the, the Clay County Admin Building will be open. The building will be open, but all the offices will be closed. That was starting today due to the election. We have the primary election on June second. And so you can, you can go into the building. We're obviously encouraging, strongly encouraging absentee. But, um, but you do have obviously a constitutional right to vote. And so we are providing that as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody hasn't.
I think Steve Pick joined us as well. Visit about what SM, Steve, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're a little bit unique. We do have the opportunity to have a walk-up window in our entryway. So we have closed the building to the public. We do have a walk-up window where we accept only credit card payments. The machine is on the outside of the glass and our employees on the inside. There's no chance of contamination. As far as our outside crew employees, we're working split facilities. So we have half at our facility and, and half of the facility, the school was gracious enough to let us use. And then we also have a number of our employees taking their vehicles home. So they're basically working out of their vehicle and not reporting to our facilities. And then we do have probably fifteen office staff that are working completely from home at this point in time.
Thank you, Steve. So we've heard from Eric and we've heard from Steve Pick. We have a first, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I would call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Resolution carries. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Steve, for your participation in that item. Six L is a resolution to approve acceptance of a quitclaim deed for the south fourteen feet of Lot eleven, Block B, original platte of the city of Spencer, Clay County, Iowa, three oh two Grand Avenue sidewalk and parking from Vermeer Glass LLC.
I'll make a motion in favor of that.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Questions or discussion on this?
Mark, I see you did go out and look at the property and it's in, is, are in good shape right now. It does give us a liability down the road. We, we will have to pave it at some point. Not for several years, hopefully, but, but that, that does give us some some liability there, correct?
Certainly. It will require some maintenance at some point. I did inspect it, felt it to be in good, average to good condition, and I did not see any issues that gave an immediate concern.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I will call the vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Morrison.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you. Resolution carries. Item seven, engineers report. Ross?
Yeah, on the two thousand nineteen West Forest Street sewer replacement project, Holstein Excavating has been on site since the middle of last week. They've been working on cleaning up and finished grading. They were supposed to have a crew in town this afternoon to start replacing the temporary pavements. But obviously the rain is holding them off a little bit there. So as soon as the rain stops, whether it's tomorrow or Wednesday, I think we'll see their concrete crew here. And getting the rest of the stuff cleaned up. So it's good to get that going. Also, I mentioned before, Delos Construction completed the work on the PCC Patching Project. They started that early last week and completed it on Friday. So that job was quick and worked into their schedule pretty well. On the two thousand nineteen PCC paving project, Van Hollen Lawn Service was in about a week and a half ago and seeded that project. And so that's complete as well. So the, the rain is kind of a welcome, welcome thing for the new seed. So any questions on anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. City managers report. Amanda?
Sure. I have a few updates. First, I think it's important for you all to know that Spencer Industries Foundation met for the final time a couple of weeks ago and voted to substantially change their bylaws and rename their organization to the Spencer Economic Development Corporation. They're now a nine-member executive board who are hoping to really take the city's economic development plan and move that forward in a more coordinated manner with our, with our partners. So we thank the former members of for their, their time on that board over the years and the work that they've done up until this point. I want to say Don, I think he drafted no less than twenty-five different bylaw amendments. And also want to, want to give thanks to Phil Christie for his work as Chair of Spencer Industries Industries Foundation in moving the issue forward. He now will serve as Chair of SEDC. So that's an exciting development amidst all of COVID-19 matters. Our Unified Command Team continues to meet at four thirty every day and that, that sometimes the calls are very short. Sometimes they're a little lengthy, but provides everyone an opportunity to hear hear information from one another and, and share it as, as we're able. I do want to give a special thanks to the hospital, especially Jeff Messerall. Jeff's on our calls every day. But beyond those calls, he, he takes every question and idea and, and concern that we might have and provides very thoughtful and very thorough guidance to us. And, and I, I think he, he deserves a lot of thanks from all of us. He's, he's done a phenomenal job in, in not only providing information, but keeping all of us calm in this, in this situation. So special thanks to Jeff. A reminder that it is census time. So please take the census. It's important that everyone who lives in Spencer is counted. A lot of our federal funding sources rely on census data. And so if not everyone is counted, that has an impact on things that we are able to do in our community. I was reminded that there is a website. So if people are looking for ways to volunteer during this crisis, or if they have a need, they can't get out to get groceries, things, things like that. They can go to cccovidrelief.org and they can find more information there on how to volunteer and how to receive assistance. Lastly, as a member of the Northwest Iowa League of Cities, I think it's exciting for you all to know that during the annual scholarship deliberations, Turner Soden, who is a Spencer resident and is a senior at HMS, was awarded a thousand dollar scholarship from the Northwest Iowa League of Cities. He intends to study fire science. So if you know Turner or know his family, please make sure to congratulate him. And we're excited that, that someone from Spencer was, was awarded. So with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Amanda, the new Economic Development Committee, are they a separate nonprofit organization? They're not really under the auspices of the city, right? They collaborate with us?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions for Amanda? All right. Item nine, mayor's report. I see Steve Pick, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
You want to talk a little bit about the pork loin project that you helped spearhead? How many pork loins were given out?
Sure. Greg Leir, Sharifa Jones and myself, along with a lot of volunteers and sponsors, held the pork loin, community pork loin distribution last Friday afternoon from three to seven. We handed out just under eleven thousand pounds of pork loin in that four hours and had a really good community event. And again, a big thanks to all the sponsors and volunteers.
Well, we appreciate your efforts in that. It's like a great event. Opening up, I would like to encourage the citizens to be patient and respectful as their local businesses open back up. They've all taken extreme measures to enact what the governor has recommended, as well as keep their own employees safe. So they're taking a lot of time and effort to change what they do in order to continue. And I would just ask that you extend the same courtesy back to them. Take precautions as you enter into their business. If you have a mask, I would encourage you to consider wearing it. Be respectful and take the time to have the patience as they adjust their schedules. And we wish all of those businesses who are opening back up the best of luck and those who are still not able to open, we hope that you are able to open soon. And we look forward to the governor making a decision on that. We know it's been a tough road and we appreciate you hanging in there. We look forward to doing business with you when you are open. Last, I'd like to thank my daughter, Morgan. I couldn't take my hair anymore. It's the longest since I was about three or four years old. And so she busted out my mom's clippers. She used to be a beautician and gave me the seventeen-year-old haircut there. So appreciate her efforts. Thank you, Morgan. With that, I would entertain any questions?
I'd say that was very wise, Mr. Mayor. It probably kept peace in your family and, and your marriage intact.
Well, it certainly kept peace in my own mind. I can tell you that, George. A little shaggy. Item ten, council committee reports?
So we have our regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, May eighteenth at six thirty PM. I think it's, it's wise if we just plan to attend via Zoom and hopefully our June meetings, we can be in person. I did just get a message from Bill that he'd like to schedule a finance committee meeting for next Monday, the eleventh at five thirty PM. So that'd be George. George and Lauren, if that will work for the two of you.
It'll work for me. Lauren?
What was the date, Amanda?
Uh, next Monday, the eleventh.
Does it work for Bill?
It was my idea.
Sure. What time?
At five thirty.
Why would that matter?
We'll get it sent out then.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims.
So moved.
Second.
First by Bill, second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anybody like the platform?
Did we decide when the committee meeting was going to be for the golf carts? And maybe if not, we should get that hammered out.
We have not. Tracy, when do you want to have a meeting?
Whatever works for everyone will work great. After five thirty.
Yeah, next Monday at six. Will that, will finance and personnel be done or?
Should be.
Well, let's, let's plan for six thirty just to be on the safe side so we don't get booted out of one week next.
Next Monday at six thirty.
All right.
Ron, you're like me. We're too old. It's not finance and personnel anymore. It's just finance.
Yeah. I know. It's like, yeah, it's kind of old school to gotta remember those things.
Yeah.
We'll get a agenda out for those.
Thanks, Amanda.
Sounds good.
Very good. Anybody else?
Uh, one quick technical note. For some reason, I had a hard time hearing Brian and Teresa.
Same here.
Okay.
What a great.
Just for next time.
You hear me okay, Donovan?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine. And everyone else was just fine.
Okay.
Number of crushers.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Do the same.
Keep safe.